All right, it is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, July 14th. And since we're going straight into executive session, do I read all this stuff now? Or do I read it before we start at 6:30, like I normally do?
You can skip reading the introductory executive session language.
Okay. All right. It is 5:00 PM, Tuesday, July 14th. We have a full council. We've got five of us here in chambers and one person on virtual. And I am calling our meeting to order. The first thing that we're going to do is go into executive session. We'll be going into executive session with the goal of discussing two items I want to share with council, that we will have a hard stop at 6:15 because we need to be able to stop executive session and let the community support people call in and still start our meeting at 6:30. So if it gets to be five or so minutes after six and we're not going to make it, then we are going to go into executive session at the end of the meeting to finish up whatever we're not able to cover in an hour and 15 minutes. So I just wanted to give everybody that heads up and also to let you know that means that you'll have a quick bio break at 6:15 before we get started on the regular council meeting. So we will be going into executive session to discuss the following two items. Two A, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interests associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three at 385 South Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. We will also be discussing item 2B, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the Main Street rehabilitation project, including real property and easements in regards to 702-704 Main, Kunsari, and pending legal proceedings for 1113 Main Street McDonald. We will note that on the 702-704 discussion that Councilmember Ennis will be recusing himself. So if you, if we're able to cover that in the first one, Councilmember Ennis will step out during that conversation. So it is 5:02 and we are in executive session. All right. It is 6:18 and we are back in regular session. I will share with the public that we discussed 2A and on item 2B, we only discussed 1113 Main Street. And so we are going to discuss any appropriate actions on agenda item number three, but we will be going back into executive session later in the meeting to discuss 702 and 704. So on item number three, take any necessary or appropriate actions on matters posted for consideration in closed or executive session. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson or Councilmember Ennis?
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve resolutions, number R 2020-64 and number R 2020-65, authorizing the city manager to sign a possession and use agreement and right of entry with William A. Griesenbeck and William J. Griesenbeck in real property for wastewater treatment plant number three.
I have a motion. A second? I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Rogers for right of entry and possession and use agreements with the Griesenbecks. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve resolution number R 2020-66, authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase agreement with T.F. Hunter's Crossing LP Track 3 West for real property for wastewater treatment plant number three. I'd like to add that I have a conflict of interest on this issue of which I have a signed affidavit on file.
Mayor, I'd like to let you know that I have a conflict of interest that I have put into file.
So Mayor and council, counting the number of votes, we do not need all council members to vote to pass this. And so I was looking at to see, one, two, three.
And Doc?
Yeah. I'm thinking the best thing to do is for Councilmember Rogers and Nelson to go ahead and abstain, having declared their conflict. Those are already on record in the city secretary's office. And let the rest of the city council vote on this one.
Mr. Attorney, do we, is it okay for him to have made the motion if he's abstaining?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Madam Secretary, if you will take the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Abstaining, please.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Abstaining, please.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion carries with three positive votes. Council, do we have another motion?
I do.
Turn on your mic.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve resolution number R 2020-67, authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase agreement with Helen Simmons, Track 2A West for a real property, excuse me, for real property for wastewater treatment plant number three.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. It is 6:22 and we are going to take a recess. We will be back at 6:30 to start our regularly scheduled meeting. 6:23, we're in recess. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:30 and we are back in regular session. We have called to order, we started our executive session at 5:00, but for our 6:30 regular meeting, the city council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed below as authorized by the Texas Government Code. Consultation with attorney, deliberations about real property, deliberations about gifts and donations, personnel matters, deliberations about security devices, and economic development. It's 6:30, we're starting our meeting. If everyone in this building and those of you at home can do what you wish, but if you will rise, we will be saying the pledge to both the flags. If you would please remain standing. Councilmember Peterson has agreed to give us our invocation this evening. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Almighty God, we thank you for your continued provisions and protection for all of us in the city of Bastrop. Tonight, we ask your blessings of wisdom and understanding as we do the business of our community. Please guide us through the work and provide safety and the well-being to all the people that serve. God bless and watch over the first responders, the doctors, the nurses, and other healthcare caregivers, and keep them all safe. Bless us to listen and hear one another as we work together. In your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Peterson. Appreciate that. All right, council, we're moving on to presentations. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's report, and I actually have one. Really quick before we, and Colin was really sweet about sneaking it in because I didn't get it done until this afternoon. Today was an election day. If you haven't voted, the polls are open for 25 more minutes. So if you're at home and you haven't voted, we won't be surprised if you run off and go vote, but I'm sure hope that everybody voted. I wanted to tell you about two other things. I got a, as a member of the Bastrop County Historical Society, I got a very sweet update. They normally do their quarterly newsletter, and instead of it being a newsletter, it was a one-pager from the, from the, Shara Johnson. And in her, it was a very well-written letter, and it just reminded me that all of our nonprofits are hurting. They, fundraisers haven't been able to happen, they're not able to do their normal business. And so if anyone on council, anyone who's listening to this from the public, if you have the ability, I would really encourage you to reach out and help the nonprofits that are close to your heart, all of the nonprofits. And we'll be hearing from some additional nonprofits later in our meeting tonight. But I just want to remind everyone that if you are blessed and have the ability, it's really a great time to reach out to the nonprofits. And one piece of good news, council received the email, but I wanted to share it with the public. Becca Sexton came and presented and let us know that she was going to be going for a grant for the touchless checking out. And she told us it was a state application. It was a three-week window, and she had to come to us to ask permission to submit the grant. In three weeks, which is a pretty short window for a grant window, they got 116 applications and Bastrop ranked 14th out of 116 applications. And the committee is recommending 38 of the applications. So we're 14 out of 38. So Ms. Sexton doesn't want to count her chickens before they hatch, but we really look like we're in a good position to get that. And that meeting will be on July 20th. So city manager, I'm sure if they are successful in getting that, that's something we'll celebrate at our next council meeting. But I just want to counsel and the public to be aware of that. I was, I'm really proud of her, and she's had a lot going on personally and with staff and is really doing a great job. So just a couple of really quick things. You can go to the next one, Colin. I went to the first ribbon cutting since all of COVID has started. You will see that we are all wearing masks and we were together, we were that close to each other until we could cut the ribbon. I'm standing there with Kim and her brother, and LABC Food Kitchen had their relocation grand opening. That is a family-owned restaurant. I don't know if there is a tougher business than working with your family in a food restaurant in a stressful time trying to start a new location during COVID. So just really wanted to give them a shout out. And then I also, if you haven't driven down Main Street, the 921 Main Building is really coming along, and it has changed the landscape of Main Street. And that was just a, I thought that was kind of a cool shot where you can see what it's going to look like and where we are so far. So wanted to share that for folks that haven't been up and down Main Street. The next item shows that once again, I'm not doing much from a getting out in the public kind of standpoint. I do attend the joint EOC meetings, and I'll be at the BDC Board Meeting on July 20th, and then our next council meeting is the 28th. At the next item, next page, you will see that one of the biggest things that I want to call out is, and staff will know, there are some chants in the hallway, and I believe Mr. Jobe leads the chant most of the time, August 3rd, August 3rd, because that's when Mr. Hoffman will start, and we will have our full-time city manager. And I know that he's been, we are well aware of the fact that he has an established email account because he's been reading emails and responding, and we're just really looking forward to him coming. I want to also bring to your attention that we have a special budget meeting on July 30th. That's a change from the date that we talked about at our last council meeting. Madam Secretary has put that on everyone's calendar, so I just wanted to kind of call that out to you. And then our next council meeting would be August 11th. The last item I have on my mayor's report is something that I could have covered on the item where we'll give the COVID update, but I really wanted to just take a moment. Our library was the call center for the first several months. Today is day 121 of being in the emergency. They moved the call center to a virtual. That call center does not just automatically take care of itself. There is a tremendous amount of training, and you can imagine how many things have changed in 121 days. What orders are, has the governor just issued? How do I get testing? And this is a list of names, and I did it in alphabetical order by first names because normally we do it by last names. I really want to personally thank each and every person who is listed on this. The call center is under the operations section. James Allen has been the main contact with the call center. In 121 days, they have answered 2,158 calls. Michael Hubbard was, and Sheila Lowe have been two of the main leaders of that through this effort. And I know there's a very few of us here, but if council, if you would indulge me, I'd like to have a round of applause for these volunteers. These are the people that stepped up when the rest of the community needed them, and it's been a friendly voice. And there's some people in some pretty frantic times, and I just really and truly wanted to thank them for their continued dedication. That, council, ends my mayor's report. Councilmember Peterson, how about if you go first tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Rogers? Yes, Mayor, I have a request of our city manager. I've been, a citizen reached out to me to find out the details about how the solar program and how the city can be part of that. And I told him that I wasn't sure, but I would reach out and find out some information. So I didn't know if he might be able to find out how, you know, how that program works and how the city may or may not be able to get involved with it.
Sir, I'll certainly look at it.
Okay, thank you. And that was pretty much all I had. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Serving as y'all's representative, the city's representative on the council of governments within the capital area, also participate in the Clean Air Coalition. And CAPCO maintains in the city as well as the county participates in the air quality index to notify the public about air quality conditions. Certain groups of people are especially vulnerable to air pollution, including children, the elderly, and people with respiratory conditions such as asthma. An ozone action day is declared when weather conditions are likely to combine with pollution emissions to form high level of ozone near the ground that may cause harmful health effects. An example is the recent Sahara Dust Storm that when combined with a high heat, and yes, we have high heat, can easily affect those dealing with nasal allergies, asthma, and assorted lung illnesses. If you or a loved one may be susceptible, try to stay indoors as much as possible. Some great information will be found on www.aercentraltexas.org. I would encourage anybody who has any questions to go to that website. And I'm going to mention the census again. We're still in the self-response phase until October 31st. Bastrop County at under 53% still lags behind the rest of the state, which is about 57%, and the nation comes in right at 62%. Please encourage friends, neighbors, workers, associates, and what all to go to www.my2020census.gov. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to report tonight, but I would like to clear up a misconception or misunderstanding that may arise from your mayor's report. I would like for everybody who's listening tonight or is here, our mayor never does nothing. She is always working hard. She is always here at this building from nine to five, and she answers emails, every phone call that's made to her, and we are blessed to have her, and I think we ought to give her a big round of applause.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Councilmember Jackson?
I just wanted to, I echo those remarks from Councilmember Ennis, and I just wanted to say that I've heard nothing but good things about the face mask coverings that are being implemented throughout the city. Several citizens have contacted me and let me know that they're really happy to see that that's happening. In fact, all three of the cities have done that, and they're really proud of that. They feel much safer in our community because of that. I did have one negative comment, but I discussed it with our assistant city manager, and it was about the appropriate face masks that some people are wearing, and some were city employees, but we'll discuss that later on at a different time. But mostly, it was very positive. Everyone's happy that face masks are being utilized, and I think it makes us a safer community.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. We are moving on to item 7C, city manager's report. Mr. Jobe?
(Inaudible). Can you hear me? Is that working? There we go. There we are. It must have been a delay. Just a quick update on some of the budget meeting items that we, they have, I bet you on where we're at, July 24th.
A little bit louder, I'm sorry.
It's okay. How about now, Doc? Can you hear me?
(Inaudible). Let's move to another mic. Nope, you're good. I got it. Can you hear me now, Doc? Is that better? Okay. So July 24th is our deadline for the chief appraiser. July 30th is the workshop that you spoke about for the budget, upcoming budget workshop, where we're going to revisit the priorities that we discussed at our, some of our previous meetings and how we plan to fund those. August 4th, again, we're to discuss the tax rate. That's on our budget calendar. August 11th, you mentioned earlier, we've got some of the same dates. I see we've been doing the same homework. August 11th, we're going to have our public hearing, discuss some major topics. We also have a budget meetings, a budget workshop scheduled for August 18th and August 19th if we need it. So just want to keep this fresh on your mind. We're working on budget. This is what we're going to, these are some important dates we need to write down.
You said August 15th. I don't see that date on there.
August 18th and 19th.
Okay, 18th. My ears heard 15th. Sorry, sorry. Keep going.
Yes. We have a budget workshop on the 18th and 19th if needed. If you will recall, we gave, we pushed back the city council policies and procedures to the 28th to give Allen a little more time to work on that from our previous council meeting. I wanted to make sure and check with you, just before Mr. Hoffman gets here, do we want to go ahead and push it to the 11th and make it a topic? Just kind of wanted a general head nod. I'm making ready back on the 28th, but I thought this might be more appropriate.
Counsel, I think we're, and honestly, I would, I would say if Mr. Hoffman says, wow, I got a lot for the 11th, I don't even care if he bumps it another week. My understanding, the way the rules and procedures are written, the documentation that I read was that they remain in effect until we adopt new ones. So we're not hurting anything by postponing it. And I know that when we adopt new ones, the city secretary prints copies of it, and it would be saving tax dollars if we wait and just print one copy. So I think it's in our interest, and will, Mr. Hoffman can decide whether he wants it on the 11th or the following meeting.
Perfect. We'll push it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jobe. Thank you for asking.
Sure. Also, when you spoke of grants, Mr. Hancock also applied for a grant for Anna Lab, which we received this week for $5,000 for new lab equipment.
Yay, Mr. Hancock.
Something he went out and did on his own, worked out perfect, and here we go. It's an additional 5,000 for lab equipment.
Excellent.
Our street maintenance program, I'm sure everyone has seen the chip seal that's been going down, Pecan Street is one that comes to mind, Cedar, a few others. We've completed years one and two, so I just wanted to remind everybody, we said that we were going to take care of years one and two. We took the taxpayer money, we spent it exactly the way we said we were going to, and now we're going to start on year three this year, just to make sure you're all up to date.
So council, some of you weren't with us when we had this discussion in 2017, and we did the pavement condition index. Then we set the street maintenance program, and now we have completed, to my knowledge, the first time we've actually had a street maintenance program in place and completed two years' worth.
I would agree. That's, since I've been here, that's correct. Last nine years.
Thanks very much to staff, and we all recall from our pavement condition index that it, we can't, we simply, there is not enough money to go out and repave every single road. But the way that we maintain the system is to do the type of work that we've done in this crack ceiling, and you save what you've got so that we can ultimately have an entire street system that's in better shape than having them from grade A to grade F. We're trying to get everything to a reasonable. So hats off to staff for getting that done.
That's correct. Also, just to-
Madam Mayor, can I add also, and you said a key word in there, the entire city. This is, this is touching on every part of our city and not just centralized portion of our city. And I think it's extraordinarily insightful that the staff has brought the recommendations and followed through those recommendations.
Perfect. That's correct. As a matter of fact, we did quite a few roads in Riverside Grove, the Hunter's Crossing subdivisions, and everything that was cracked sealed this year or cut and patched and leveled will be sealed, you know, so on, in the next year. So we're going to follow, continue to follow our pattern.
And the Old Austin Highway, you still think it'll be taken care of by August?
Old Austin Highway is not scheduled for chip seal. It was only a cut and level up in certain spots. We're just going to, that one's in such bad shape, we're probably going to end up spending quite a bit of money on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The Wilson Street Pilot Program, just wanted to give you an update. The buttons actually started going down today. The neighbors were pretty excited. If you look at this picture, there's a couple pictures of some chip seal that went down. I think this is Hasler Shores. But to your far right, one more, Colin. There you go, is where they started putting down the buttons. They're not quite finished, but it's going to take them a couple days. It is a lot of buttons, so.
Am I recognizing one of those trucks right there? We'll just keep going.
I don't know. So, but this should take care of our, our issues. Or at least we hope so. The neighbors are excited, we're moving forward.
So that, the intention is to, you can have parking on both sides? Tell us how that works.
Okay.
What am I supposed to do when I see the buttons?
So essentially, this is a, an eight-foot median, if you will, in the center of this of the road. And what you do, what you have on the outer edges is a 10-foot drive-in lane. So you can still continue parking on the drive-in lanes, but in, but when you're ready to move into the center and pass, you're going to have to run over the button. You're going to make some noise, it's going to slow you down. You're going to be aware of what's going on. So if there's children traffic, pedestrian traffic, it's just to catch your attention. So you're not just swerving in and out of vehicles. You're going to hit those buttons, it's going to wake you up, and you're going to be aware of your surroundings.
And so that still allows bikes to go up and down either side of the street?
Correct.
Parking in front of people's houses on both sides of the street? And this is a pilot program for this one, but then what potentially can move to other areas?
That's correct. And it's just wide enough for a fire truck to straddle. So if they need to go straight down the center, their tires will be on the outside edge, and they can continue to head wherever they need to.
Excellent.
How long are we going to run the program?
So the plan is to put this down. I think we'll finish next, or the end of this week. Then we'll put out some speed counters and just come back and see if it made a difference. I'd say another month.
I believe Councilmember Ennis is really wanting to know how quick can he get buttons on Pecan Street?
You got that right. Thank you very much, city manager.
So so far, everybody seems to like them.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So from my understanding, so the outside lane or the driving lanes?
Correct.
And then the center part is the traffic calming?
Correct. It essentially serves the same purposes as the bump outs there on Main. You just have two 10-foot driving. Instead of squeezing everybody to the middle, we're squeezing to the ends, and then there's an open, since we didn't want to stop parking on the edges, and this was a way to get around that.
And you are getting good feedback?
Yes. Everybody's super excited.
Good. Great.
But they started going down yesterday, so that, you know, let's hope it is that way.
Yes. I agree.
It's, it's the first time anything's been done for traffic calming, right? I mean, that's just excellent. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes. Mr. Jobe, keep us posted on your research on this because the chip seal is great.
Good.
Everybody will really appreciate that, but the racetrack is open.
Yeah. And these, these buttons on the, on the chip seal may really be a-
You bet. You bet. Thank you.
So in part of our, in part of our budget workshop talks, we'll talk exactly about that too. Street design, how we may move forward, things of all that, how we redesign, walkability, sidewalks, et cetera. That's it. That's all I have, unless you've got any questions.
Just excellent, excellent job. You have one more, one more council meeting.
One more meeting.
All right. Good job. All right. We're going to let him stand there because, council, we're going to move on to item 8A, which ought to go pretty quick, I think. going to move on to Item 8A, which ought to go pretty quick, I think. Discussion on extending the plating exceptions into the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction. Mr. Jobe?
So Mayor and Counsel, I just wanted to get a little policy direction because we're going through the, the B-3 codes and as you know, it's fluid. We're looking for things that we didn't quite catch originally, and we're making a list. But this is something that was brought to my attention, so I wanted to bring it to your attention. We, we currently have certain exemptions within the city limits. You can be a lot of record and you can continue to build and get a permit. You can be over five acres, right? Or you can do less than 50% of an increase of your floor plan on your house, which also allows you for an exemption. And we, my, I was curious or wanted to make sure we're on the right path, that we wanted to extend that into the ETJ. Because the way the code is currently written is we only do that in the city limits and then outside, we just follow state law. So for example, if you lived in the, if you lived in the ETJ, let's say the statutory ETJ, and you wanted to add 300 square foot in your home, you cannot get a permit from the county without replating your property, which is okay, but it's, it's, it's an expense. So I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. We will bring you back some solutions for that and some changes, but I want to make sure we were heading in the right direction.
So Counsel, the city manager came up with this solution. I received a phone call and it's the, it's Councilmember Ennis's favorite conversation, which is lot of record. You love talking about the lot of record. And if, if you are, if you own a large piece of property in the county and you're going to subdivide it and develop it, you're planning on plating it and it's not a big deal. But we have put ourselves in a position, if you are in the statutory ETJ, you're on a piece of property you and your family have owned for a gazillion years and you're wanting to add literally 300 square feet, you're now being told that you have to go back and replat the entire property. We, we said we didn't want to put that burden on our citizens that live inside the city limits. And I would be supportive of us saying that we intended that to extend to the, to the ETJ. Does anybody have an issue with that?
Okay. And I think the, the main thing, just to be clear one more time, what we wanted to catch was, want to make sure the drainage is appropriate, things of that nature, like we did with our exemption process. And then whatever we do and change, we'll run, of course, by Allen to double check and make sure we're legal. And then we'll bring it back to you for approval.
So some of the purposes of the platted lot is to make sure you have a legal address, that you have access, that you can have a, a access to the utility services. So some of these properties already have all of those things and they've had them for decades. So, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
And, you know, to be clear, this does not pose any problem to the city. It doesn't impose any problem to the drainage issues because those same questions are being asked.
That's correct. We will, we will make sure they-
And this is, I mean, this is simply being a good neighbor recognizing that we have people who are contiguous to our city limits that have the same issues that our citizens do.
That's correct. And there's going to be some different, there's something different every time, but we can, we can fit it to take care of the small people.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ennis?
How much does a plating process cost?
I knew you were going to ask me that.
It depends.
It does depend on that. But right off the top of my head, I think our fee's $3,000.
How much?
I believe it's $3,000.
But that's our fee. That's not paying the surveyor and the engineer to drop the plat.
Correct.
It, it could easily be $10,000 for a single lot.
As much as eight for sure, yes. I would agree.
Yeah. Okay. Seven to-
Yeah. Seven to 10. Perfect.
Seven to 10.
I have a problem with enforcing that with somebody who's owned the land for a long, long time and saddling them with $10,000 feet.
Yeah, that's what we're saying. So we're talking about exempting them.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, just like we do in the city limits.
Okay.
So, Mr. Jobe, you and I know that there is a person who's anxiously observing this. Is there, can you do it administratively and we come back and, and confer, ratify that? Or are you going to have to talk to Allen about that?
I would like to talk to Allen about that, but if it's possible, yes.
Okay. We, there is a person pending who would like to build a 300-square-foot addition and they would like to not spend $8,500 on a plat. I would like to tell Mr. Jobe that counsel's agreeable with that. Everybody, okay. So if there's a legal way to do that, otherwise we may have an item on our next agenda.
Correct.
And we may, anyway, we may ratify what you do if you do it administratively.
Yeah, if we can do that fast, yes.
Okay. All right. That, that was not on for a vote tonight. That was purely a discussion. And now we are moving on to our presentation from organizations applying for fiscal year 2021 community support funding. Thank you to Ms. Waldron and her staff. That, the summary chart being in our packet was extremely helpful and really appreciate that. Ms. Waldron, it's, there she is. Good to see you. I don't know if you want to call your folks in order or, or how we want to do that, or if Colin has a list of the people who have called in. I recognize some faces, but not all. What's the best way to proceed?
Mayor, if you just want to go down the list, if they're here, they'll, they'll introduce themselves and-
Perfect. Okay. The first one on the list is Austin Habitat for Humanity. Do we have anyone from Austin Habitat? The next one on the list is Bastrop County Child Welfare Board.
Pardon me, Mayor. I believe Austin Habitat has someone present.
I didn't hear what she said. Oh. So Habitat for Humanity?
I'm not, William, I don't think he's able to unmute his mic.
Is it the bottom right-hand guy? Austin Habitat for Humanity, we can't hear you if that's, if you're here for that. Maybe he can. There we go. There we go.
Is it good?
Yeah, there we go.
I think I had headphone connections. My apologies. I could hear you. I guess you couldn't hear me. All right. So sorry about that. Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thanks for having us speak tonight. My name's Billy Whipple. I'm the Senior Vice President of Construction with Austin Habitat for Humanity. And for some of the folks that might not know, we provide homeownership, housing counseling, and critical home repair services in our community. And our community is a five-county area that includes the city of Bastrop. Our experience in Bastrop has been great so far. Over the last five years, we've worked doing new construction and home repair. And we really appreciate being part of the housing solution in Bastrop. But if the last five months have taught us anything, it's the value of a home and the, the safety it can provide someone. So this year with our request, we're intending to do two critical home repairs with the sole purpose of rebuilding a safe place to live for folks. We intend to leverage the funds, adding other funding sources and bringing in other home repair agencies so we can multiply the investment into the citizens. This year has been challenging as many of our clients are from vulnerable populations and so no large group orientations, very limited home visits. So that doesn't mean the housing problems are cured. I think they're hanging out there and possibly getting worse and we have some more work to do next year. We have adapted, so we're rolling out new procedures on how we'll be able to, to do home repairs safely to protect our contractors, our staff, but most importantly, the, the resident of the household. Happy to answer any questions, but we really appreciate the time and the consideration and the funding over the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Habitat? All right. Bastrop County Child Welfare Board. I didn't see Randy. All right. No Judge Fritz. Next one. Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry. Hi, Ms. Tricia.
Hello, everybody. How are y'all?
Doing good.
Good to see everybody. I am going to be really quickly before you. Let me get my presentation back up. Good evening, Mayor Schroeder, city council members, and the city staff. I'm Tricia Silva, Director for the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry. The mission of the food pantry is real simple. Our mission is to serve Bastrop County residents going through periods of transition by providing them emergency food assistance, education, and support. 2020 has been interesting for all the agencies that are here today as well as city and county officials. It has been a unique time in this season. But for us at the food pantry, we remain strong in our work and what we do. Sometimes Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry is the first and sometimes the only line of defense against hunger for individuals and families that are food insecure. The support dollars that we've received from the city of Bastrop goes to some of the most vulnerable citizens in our city, seniors, children's, families, and the homeless population. And again, like I stated, as you know, it's, the COVID has been very hard on those groups as well as on the agencies that are serving them. During COVID-19 and the unprecedented layoffs, the pantry experienced a 59% increase in requests for services during the first six weeks of the pandemic. And our peak month was April of this year. When we compared April 2020 to April 2019, it was an 80% increase of people requesting emergency food assistance. We have been the partner with the Long-Term Recovery Team and Emergency Management to deliver disaster boxes to seniors. We are still actively providing those services and getting those food boxes in partnership with Long-Term Recovery and their volunteers to people, seniors that are homebound and are afraid to come out. We, one of the things that we've been able to do during this time is maintain all of our programs and services. We had to adapt quickly to be able to continue to provide the services that we provide. There's only been one program that we have suspended and that has been our Fresh Food for Families program, simply just because that program, the way we're in the middle of the city and it's an outside distribution, if we aren't able to distribute that particular program. But other than that, we've maintained all of our programs and our services and we maintain them in a contactless fashion. One of, some of the dollars that the city provides us supports our Nibbles Project, the Backpack Program. When COVID came in, there was a big concern, would we be able to do that? We quickly mobilized and met with the school district and we maintained that program until the end of the school year. There was no interruption in the services of those kids receiving those backpacks at those three campuses. So-
Excellent. Thank you so much.
We're very grateful. I'm sorry. Was there a, is there a question?
Ms. Silva, we got lots of people and we were trying to keep you guys to two to three minutes. So.
Okay. So we're very thankful for the dollars that we receive from the city and I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Silva? Excellent job. You guys do an excellent job. Moving on to Bastrop County First Responders. I see Scooter. What you got for us, Scooter? You're muted, Scooter. We, we can't hear you, James. He's searching. Okay. We'll, we'll skip him and come back. He wants to buy 10 AEDs. I think we're pretty much going to be, one of the things that, that the first responders have always done has been extremely specific about what they're asking for. And I know one of the things he was going to want to share with us is that the trailer we bought last year is what has been at Mayfest Park for all of the COVID testing. It was one of the best purchases that we've done. It was immediately put to use for the benefit of the entire community. So Scooter, we're, I, I believe that was, your request was for the replacement of the 10 AEDs for the volunteers that are the first responders and we'll give you a chance maybe to try to call back in. Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team? I don't see Sheila. I think they're out of town. Anybody from Long-Term? Okay. Sheri, you're Bastrop County Women's Shelter Family Crisis Center.
Well, I'll definitely go next. I believe it was the Pregnancy Resource Center on the list. But good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening and for the many forms of support you have provided our agency over the years. You know, I know you all are aware of the center and our funding application provides a great overview of the services we provide and various statistics regarding those services. But allow me to share what we're currently encountering. Just like every individual, family, entity, and business, the center is doing its best to adapt and cope with this current COVID situation. Yes, coronavirus is cause for great concern and unprecedented measures. However, I also fear for the long-term ripple effect this pandemic will have on our society and social service agencies. For victims of domestic violence and abuse, we know that any external factors that add stress, isolation, and financial strain can create circumstances that further compromise your safety. This pandemic has all of those elements and more. Due to the recent orders for social distancing and staying at home, the risk to victims of domestic violence has been on the rise. Abuse is all about power and control and domestic violence and other abuse perpetrators such as child abuse perpetrators frequently use isolation to control, intimidate, and facilitate their abuse. Hotline calls and our direct service staff can attest to the escalation of abusive and violent behaviors due to these increased stressors. Even when the threat of this virus is over, which we all pray will be soon, the long-term effects on the health, safety, mental well-being, and financial security of abuse victims will continue to be compromised. As such, Family Crisis Center will be here to help. We continue to prioritize victim safety by providing emergency shelter and the range of other vital, vital life-saving services. So again, thank you for your time, your consideration of our request, and your continued efforts to support our work to end domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, and stalking in our community.
Great job. And under the wire. Thank you very much. Appreciate your submission. I'm going, but I know you, you guys may be looking at the order of the applications, but I'm going on the summary page that was before all the applications. So the next person on the list is Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm representing the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center is myself. I am Stephanie Tullis. I serve as a Vice President. We want to personally thank you for considering our grant application. We're very excited for the opportunity to once again partner with the city of Bastrop for the 2021 fiscal year. We are located at the Faith Baptist Church at 20007 Main Street of Bastrop, Texas. Our facility is providing at this time with limited COVID-19 operation hours and protocols, a safe distance space in which we teach educational classes and offer distance learning opportunities via mobile and electronic devices during this COVID epidemic. I, I think we all can agree that there is much occurring and, and it's all been numerously stated that we are all trying to adapt. So I'm just going to skip that portion of my presentation and go on to tell you that we have continually had an ongoing partnership with the city of Bastrop and it has been my delight and honor to sort, volunteer, and support our community. I've seen firsthand the benefits of this grant and our nonprofit. That continues to be such a blessing to those in need. And we look forward to positive response and powerfully impacting our community with the additional funds in which the city is able to provide. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
I, I had a question. You listed in your in-kind services that Bastrop Power and Light, November of 2014 to current. What do, do you just mean that you've been getting Bastrop Power and Light community grants?
We have been receiving the community grant and I'm not sure that that is from 2014. That might be a typo.
Okay.
We opened in 2009, I believe.
That's fine. The, the question really is that, some of us read this and we, we didn't want anyone to think that you were not paying your own electric bill. We are not providing you free electricity, correct?
That is correct. No, we are paying our electric bill. I'm very sorry. I'm not sure.
That's, that's okay. I just, I, if any of the other ones, I, I didn't want y'all, I'm saving y'all a phone call. Don't call me tomorrow and ask for free electricity. Everybody pays their electric bill. So that just clarifies. Thank you very much. And the next item is the Children's Advocacy Center.
Hi there. My name is Megan Webb and I'm the Executive Director of the Children's Advocacy Center. For anybody who doesn't know, the Advocacy Center has been part of this community since 1992. And we exist to bring a coordinated, multidisciplinary response to child abuse in our community. So what that means is that we're involved from the very beginning of investigation into child abuse and other violent crimes involving children. We work with law enforcement, child protective services, and prosecutors' offices to provide services to children and families while they're navigating the investigation and prosecution processes. So specifically, we provide specialized forensic interviews for children, advocacy services to support caregivers, and ongoing therapy for both adults and children. In addition, we're one of the few advocacy centers in the state that actually offers a specialized therapeutic program specifically geared toward children and adolescents who are displaying problematic sexualized behaviors. Specifically within the clients that we serve from Bastrop, last year, we conducted around 275 forensic interviews and we saw about 330 therapy clients for a total of almost 2,000 therapy hours. So much like Sheri said, as the current pandemic crisis continues across the state and nation, a lot of families are forced to be home now more than ever. And we recognize that in addition to domestic violence- that in addition to domestic violence, child abuse is likely increasing as well. And so, our community is going to need the services that we provide now more than ever. Over the course of the next year, we're actually hoping to move into a new office space within the city of Bastrop that would allow us to expand our services and to provide an even more welcoming and accommodating space for our clients. Unfortunately, due to the current economic uncertainty, community fundraising that we conduct and private donations may decrease, as might our grant money from federal and state funding sources. And so, we're hoping that through the generosity of partnering municipalities like the city of Bastrop, we'll be able to weather the storm and also to pursue our dream of having a new space for our clients.
Thank you very much, Megan. I appreciate it. All right, moving on to Combined Community Action. Kelly Frankie, I see you.
Combined Community Action, or us? Hi, can y'all hear me good, all right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Kelly Frankie. I'm the Executive Director at Combined Community Action. You have information for my application. I kind of just wanted to hop on here tonight to give you an update on what we're doing in response to COVID. We continue to provide meals on wheels to our participants. We are doing five frozen meals and five shelf-stable meals a week to the participants. We deliver one day a week to cut down on the face-to-face contact, and our volunteers will knock on the door, set the meals down on a chair or table, and then wait for the client to answer the door to make sure they do get the meals inside. We had hoped to go back to hot meal delivery on July 6th, but because of the jump in the numbers of virus cases, we had to postpone that for now, and we don't know how soon we'll get back to hot meals. But we will continue to provide meals one way or the other. Our site manager in Bastrop is calling our participants three days a week to check on their well-being, seeing if they need additional food. I know that some of our participants have gotten their food boxes that came out through the food pantry, too, so that's been very helpful. We did receive CARES Act funding, so we are able to help with rent, mortgage, utility assistance, gas cards, food gift cards to people that have been affected by the pandemic. If they've been unemployed, lacking childcare, or sick, they can give us a call. It's, the application is on our website, so we are able to help people. And we have helped several, I know on Friday I processed about $12,000 in rental assistance to people in Bastrop. So, we are here to help, and so just send people our way. We are kind of backlog on the applications. I don't know how the other nonprofits are doing, but it's been a lot of work, but we've hired a couple of new people to help us process these applications and get assistance to everyone. And I want to say hi to my nonprofit friends that I don't get to see anymore.
It's good to see you, Ms. Frankie. Just outstanding work being done by that organization as well as all the others. I also, we have Community Action Incorporated of Central Texas. Is there anyone from there?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Schrader and Councilmembers. I'm Dale Burke. I'm here tonight representing Community Action, the Adult Education Park. We are, Community Action has been in operation since 1965. We've been part of the Bastrop community for 20 years, providing adult education. Every year, we help hundreds of people reach their goals of speaking English and also getting their GEDs and achieving marketable skills so they can earn a living wage. We've served nearly 400 students this year, even with the challenge of going remote in a rural area. Now, we've graduated also 10 students from a certification course in bookkeeping, 12 students in Microsoft Office Specialist Certification Course, and we have six, six of our students have gotten their GEDs and four or five others in the process of getting theirs, and we also have two people that actually got their citizenship this year. Now, we have two, an office here on Pines Street, and we actually have two offices. Our offices pay for and are titled two funds through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which comes through the Texas Workforce Commission. However, we have another opportunity here for the other part of the office, another office here that we, but we're unable to pay the rent and utilities on the other half of the building due to administrative cost restrictions. With the concerns of COVID, we have lost some of our donated spaces. We need additional space to continue the services that we provide, especially for those who cannot join the online options that we're faced with now because they lack the opportunity access to the Internet. Getting this space will help us bridge the digital divide that's putting many of our regular education students at a disadvantage as they try to reach their goals. Our students are mostly hard-working adults who need to upskill all the things they have, and parents who want to help their children succeed. So, we want to, as we want to help them reach these goals, we need a safe and learning, safe space with a good learning environment, and that's why we're asking for help to have funds to do that. If any questions, I have Dr. Glenda Rose here. She's the Adult Education Area Supervisor and Coordinator, and she's, she is doing an outstanding job here, I'll tell you, and we're glad to have her in our community working. She can answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burke. And City Manager, and actually, this may be for Tracy Waldron as well. As I read this application, you may be a better match for BEDC, and so we'll have that conversation and we'll work that internally, but I've already sent an email to Cameron Cox, and because of the workforce development, I think, I think they'll have a grant, and I think that may be a better match for you. So, don't be surprised if you hear from somebody, we may be contacting you and shuffle you over to another spot, so. And appreciate your application and the clarity of what you're trying to get done, and it's certainly a great mission. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to Court Appointed Special Advocates of Bastrop County, Bastrop Lee and Fayette County, I know. Ms. Glasper.
Right. Hi, good evening. My name is Christy Glasper, and I'm the Executive Director for CASA, which stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. We are very fortunate in that we are able to serve not only Bastrop County, but Fayette County and Lee Counties as well. Our mission is that we recruit community volunteers, train them the CASA way, and appoint those community volunteers to advocate on behalf of abused children from our communities. I would tell you that right now, we are unfortunately on target to exceed the amount of children that we served last year. To date, we've served almost 325 kids, and last year we served, we've met that, last year we've served 321. I am proud to say that we are serving 100% of the children that enter the child abuse and neglect system here in all three counties, and that's not something that other CASAs are able to do. They have to pick and choose which cases that they serve, and we're not willing to do that. We don't want to pick and choose and have to say this child is, you know, this one's case is more important than the other. So, we are serving 100% of our children. You know, COVID has certainly thrown a wrench into everybody's way that they do business. I will tell you that it has not changed the way that we do services. It changes the way that we deliver their services. And so, instead of physically being able to go out and see those children, we are now Zooming and Skyping and whichever form of way that we can see those children, we're making sure that they are taken care of. I myself, if we have children who are, just need to be seen, I am and my staff are going out and seeing those children, if it's a drive-by and visiting those children while they stand in the yard and we see them from our car. We want to make sure, sure, excuse me, that eyes are laid on those children at all times. We have changed the way that we do our volunteer training. We are now hosting a volunteer training by Zoom, which has been challenging, but we are not willing to just sit and wait. We have people who are eager from all of the communities that we serve to become volunteers to assist these kids. Our biggest fear is that, like Megan mentioned, is that we're going to have an increase of children who are being abused and neglected, and we're starting to see that now. Our fear is that now, when they return to school, whichever way that looks, children are going to start talking to their teachers and their counselors, so we want to be prepared to be able to serve those children. Unfortunately, Bastrop, over the last four or five years, have had the most removals of children in all of the communities that we serve, and so we really are targeting, trying to increase those volunteer recruitment efforts, and that's some of the funding that we're looking at for support here, is to really do some outreach and understand the importance and the diversity of our volunteers that we need to be able to serve those children. So, I again, thank you for the support that you've provided in the past, and certainly want to continue those efforts moving forward.
Thank you very much, Ms. Glasper. Counsel, I want to bring to your attention that, at the volunteer fair that we had, where we try to get people to volunteer for the board, that CASA picked up seven volunteers at that fair. So, Ms. Glasper was one of the people that was saying, sure, we'll be nice when we can have a fair again. So, if you're, if you're in the public and you're interested in volunteering, please reach out to CASA. And again, I will repeat what I said earlier, pick your favorite nonprofit. They can all use financial and volunteer support, so do what you can to support them. Thank you, Ms. Glasper.
Thank you.
The last one, last item was Feed the Need, and I talked with, I talked with him earlier today, and I don't, and I don't see him online. Scooter, can, can we try again, see if you, if we can hear you?
Yeah, can y'all hear me now?
Yes, there we go.
Okay. I'm on several video conference calls a day. I'm not sure what happened with this one, but anyway, for those of y'all don't know me, my name is Scooter Green. I'm the President of the Bastrop County First Responders. We've been providing medical first response here to Bastrop County and the city of Bastrop for 32 years. Last year, we responded to about 1,900 medical emergencies, about 10% of which occurred within the city of Bastrop. We also have provided about 175 personnel hours performing medical standby at various of public events in the city. I wanted to take a moment to appreciate the council for the funding last year that enabled us to purchase our mobile medical unit. We placed into service on March 22nd, and it immediately went out to the Mayfest Park and served as the basis for the COVID testing station out there, and it's still out there to this day. So, it went right to use and definitely getting some return on investment there. This year, we're seeking funding to purchase 10 automatic external defibrillators to replace seven that we acquired in 2013. They have reached the end of their service life and no longer supported, and additional two units to replace two broken units, and one new unit to expand our capabilities and provide this necessary equipment for other first responders that currently don't have one. So, I appreciate the consideration. Do you have any questions?
Just want to take another moment to thank you, Scooter, and that entire organization, just outstanding work, all of the organizations. I'm just so proud to be a part of the, of Bastrop community and to have such great nonprofits involved. So, thank you guys for taking time to present. We really appreciate your applications, and you are in the process, and we will be doing what we can to meet. We know that the needs exceed the ability to supply, but we'll be doing what we can. So, thank you guys very much. Absolutely. Councilmember Rogers?
Tracy, several of these applications had an attachment on it. Can you send those to us?
I think they're in our Dropbox.
In the Dropbox?
Yeah, Tracy, I sent you the same thing. Some of them are referencing a letter, their full application and letters and everything. Are they in a Dropbox that we can see?
Yeah, she, yeah, she uploaded everything to the Dropbox. The only thing she included in the agenda was just their application.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't realize that's where it was. I'll go back and look at them. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't know either. So, we'll, we'll have a chance to review it before we're voting on the, on the budget. One other thing, and I'm not sure, I don't know where to look. I'm looking at the screen, Tracy, where she can't see me, which makes absolutely no sense, or I can look at our City Manager, Mr. Jobe. Several, I listed, one, two, three, four of them mentioned using the convention center, and I believe that we should have a standardized approach to all the nonprofits. I know with use of the convention center, we're going to have some additional costs associated with the, with COVID, with sanitizing before and after, and I just want us to be fair, and I would like, Tracy, for us to look at, for instance, for me, if it's a fundraising event, I think we should give everybody like a certain amount of money that goes towards that fundraising event, and if they need the, need it for a few hours and that covers them, fine, and if they need it the night before and the day after, then it's, it's an amount of money towards that event. So, something that's consistent so that they're all getting use of the convention center, but that it's consistent for everyone. And then, I also noticed that one of them, and, and I mean, you guys all have the same applications, and that's CAC, the Children's Advocacy Center, talked about needing convention center space to do law enforcement training. For me, that's different than they're trying to do fundraising, so I'm, if it's law enforcement training that allows people to not travel, we're not paying reimbursement, then I'm fine if, if council wants to say, we just donate X amount of hours of that type of thing. So, I don't know the answer. We're not voting on that tonight, but I believe it would be beneficial for the nonprofits, for their planning, and for the convention center if we standardized and kind of tidied up what we offer to each of the, each of the nonprofits so that they can plan. Are y'all okay with that? And we'll obviously talk about it at the budget workshop and stuff, but I think we ought to be, have a more consistent approach to their use of the convention center. Mayor Protem Nelson?
I think.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Rogers?
On that same fact, if we, if, I know that, you know, we sometimes give money out of a different fund, you know, like the NIBBLES program, which is a fabulous program, and I know it comes out of a different pocket or bucket, however you want to do it, but I think it should still show that same dollar amount so we can see, you know, a good number all the way across. You understand what I'm saying? I'm not sure how that budget-wise goes, but I know we, we, they, they ask for different monies and sometimes different pockets. So, am I saying that right? I just want to see one total.
You want to be able to look at, these are the donations that are made regardless of how they're funded.
Right. That's what I'm saying. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yeah, I mean, all of these are outstanding organizations, but I think there needs to be a recognition that there's cost incurred in utilizing the convention center, and that there needs to be an understanding with each one of those groups and perhaps shared cost to see what the, what various cost aspects are and what can be absorbed by the city and what can be absorbed by the organization.
Councilmember Ennis?
Maybe I'm not understanding, but didn't we combine the NIBBLES program in a year ago?
No, sir. Page 93 of our budget says that the city will have separate partnership agreements with the YMCA, the NIBBLES program, and the Bastrop County Long Term Recovery Team. So, I believe that's, that was Councilmember Rogers's point, was that the NIBBLES was not included in the number, and she'd like to see it in the number.
But Bill, I believe we requested it last year. We just, it just wasn't a follow-through. The request was made, but...
That's what I'm remembering. Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right. Good stuff. Yay. And give, give all you can to our, to our community. Thank you guys for participating. We really appreciate it, and we'll be getting back with you. Okay, citizen comments. I have one citizen comment. It is from Richard M. Hutchins at 105 Frontier Trail, and Mr. Hutchins says, "Request update concerning the limitation of use of the city of Bastrop facilities, specifically the Bastrop Exhibit and Convention Center as outlined in Ordinance 2020-18. It is my understanding that the limitation was initially set to expire July 15, 2020." Thank you. We will be discussing that on Item 12A. So, that is, and Madam Secretary, are there any other citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
All right. We've covered citizen comments. We are on the consent agenda. There is only one item for the consent agenda, and that is the meeting minutes from the June 23rd. Council, you have before you some minor updates that were made to the agenda that was in the packet. Councilmember Jackson, that was emailed to you as well, so that is the only consent item.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The meeting minutes for June 23rd have been approved. Moving on to our items for individual consideration, council, it's 7:35. Everybody okay if we keep going? All right. We are on Item 12A. Consider and adopt on first and final reading, Ordinance Number 2020-18, as an emergency measure ratifying temporary emergency orders enacted by the mayor in her capacity as the Emergency Management Director in regards to the current local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of the public peace, healthy, health, and safety. Sorry, health and safety turned into he- healthy. Colin, I sent you a document for 12A. There we go.
Mine's 12A.
Oh, that's yours, is mine's next. Oh, that's yours, is mine's next? Okay, you go.
I was going to make this part of the city manager report, but it's even more appropriate here. So just some questions to, to think over while we're talking about this item. The building reopening, as you see, the mayor's going to propose that we make it to be determined. The cancellation of some recent events that have taken place is the Veterans Day Car Show, the Corvette Invasion, the Corvette Invasion, and the Food Truck Festival. So what we wanted to just keep in mind is we continue these events. We also know that we've increased some costs due to COVID, things of that nature, which is what we're going to have a conversation about, obviously now. The type of events, what do we want to have? Weddings are completely different than trainings, for example. You're able to maintain six feet. It's a lot easier to, to, there's no dancing, there's no drinking, things of that nature. So I was hoping we could get some kind of policy guidance on that. But for now, we just, to be determined and we cancel everything in the queue for 90 days and then we review it in 45 and then I'll let the mayor take it from here.
So a couple of quick things.
Sure.
The Veterans Day Car Show, they met and made the really tough decision and sent out a very sweet email to everyone. It's, it's hard to get people to volunteer for the car show and, you know, the, the problem. And we, we had someone bring up, as a matter of fact, did you know we have to order snow in August if we're going to have snow day in December? And it is a non-refundable deposit. So there, some of these things, you can't just decide this week that you're going to have a car show next week. So the Veterans Day Car Show, the Bastrop area cruisers took long, hard look at everything and just said it, they just couldn't pull it off this year. The Corvette Invasion, when they were trying to pull the trigger, it was right as the cases were going up and they had people, some people canceling on them. The Food Truck Festival had grown into a big family, get the kids together on a rock climbing, and it just, you know, it was like, we think we're sending the wrong message. So the discussions have been had between city staff and the people throwing the event and it's important to note, we've given everybody back their deposit money.
Correct.
It's, it's acts of God from, from my perspective and we don't want to be taking advantage of any of these folks and we want to encourage them as soon as society comes to a place where we can have them safely, we want them to be rebooking with the convention center. So we've returned that money, but we have found ourselves in a position where we really shouldn't be wasting people's time if it's an event that we're not going to have. So I need to kind of clarify a couple of things. What you have before you is a new phase plan and phase three, what we talked about at the last council meeting, wow, sorry for the small, it looked bigger on my computer, sorry for the small print. I, I know how Alan feels sometimes, it like looked really big when I was sitting at my desk. What we did at the last council meeting was made phase three be effective, what we were hoping was July 15th because it would give us tonight's idea whether or not it was really good to go. You will see, I wanted to give you some additional information. I already mentioned that we're on day 121 of the emergency. When I prepared the document that I sent to Colin at the last minute, around 1 o'clock today, we had 690 cases. At 4:14 PM today, I got a notice that we had an additional 59 cases. So we stand tonight at 749 cases. To put that in perspective, the first case number one for Bastrop County was on March 25th. At Easter, we had 19. On Mother's Day, we had 117. At Memorial Day, we had 182. By July 4th, we had 498 and as we stand tonight, we're at 749. The recoveries are still at 160, although we're hoping that that day, that, that data may, we may get to see some increased numbers with that. As I mentioned, today was 59 cases, yesterday was 40 cases. We added three deaths yesterday. Those were nursing home deaths and to be really honest with you guys, it is a person who went from the nursing home to the hospital, was deceased and was not, at the time that they died, not designated as COVID, but as they've gone through medical records and they were checked, they did have COVID, so it's now being attributed as a COVID death. So although it's a very unfortunate death and certainly if you were involved in that family, it's extremely unfortunate, but I don't want anyone to think that three people died yesterday. It's, it's a matter of kind of cleaning up some, some paperwork. So with regard to the phasing, what Trey was referring to, it seems like every time we pick a date, then we end up having to move that date. So from a planning position, we are suggesting that we leave it as to be determined and that we, we consider right now on July 15th, he mentioned it exactly, I'm not trying to be ugly, if it is a wedding reception, when you get family, music, and alcohol, you don't make the same decisions that you make when it is, I'm sitting in a classroom with my mask on with somebody that's delivering training materials. So there's events that we host, like Farm Street Opry, which I, I am recommending for the next 90 days, we say, we're not doing Farm Street Opry. Those are folks that are coming from all kinds of places and quite frankly, it, it's our elderly population and we, the musicians, poor Kathy, you know, the musicians are trying to decide where they can play and, and how they can make plans. So our recommendation is that we not do events for 90 days and that we do like a 45-day rolling look at things. So that's why this new phasing document says TBD instead of just picking the day after the next council meeting. To give some additional information, the county has launched their, the portal for testing. You don't have to have doctor's orders. You go onto the portal, you answer some questions and there are some, some caveats. We're trying to restrict it, the county is restricting it to people who either live in the county or work for a government agency or a healthcare person that is, if you're employed by a hospital inside Bastrop County, but you live in Fayette County, you would be eligible through the portal because you were a healthcare provider. They did 518 tests last week in three days at, at Mayfest and that's with Acadian. They're still working on getting a contract with Ascension in St. Davids. When those sites get open, Acadian will become a mobile site. We've done year-to-date, 3,227 tests have been performed inside Bastrop County. Some of those have been done by, not at Mayfest, but it's not a complete list, but that's kind of where we are. Since our last council meeting, I know everyone is aware that I signed a mask order, emergency order number seven on June 30th and the governor, no, I did not call him, several people have tried to say, ooh, you get credit for that. I totally, he did not call me, but he did sign a mask order on July 2nd. His is more stringent than mine. I, tonight, we could say that, well, we don't really need you to ratify emergency order number seven because of the governor's order. I would prefer for you to do that because his orders go all over the place and I'd like us to all be on the same page. And I, I would request that you, that you do that. So what you have before you tonight that I would like you to vote on as a part of 2020-18 would be confirming and ratifying emergency order number seven and agreeing to the phased reopening plan that is the second amendment that shows phase three as being to be determined, giving direction to staff that for the next 90 days, we do not plan on sponsoring in having an event that the city sponsors. And I, council, we can discuss it. I recommend that wedding receptions not be in the next 90 days. Any comments? Councilmember Ennis?
I definitely agree with you. Do we need to put 45-day and 90-day, 90-day reviews on this? I mean, we're.
We're meeting every two weeks, kind of thing?
I'm just thinking, why don't you give us an update at every council meeting on what you've just done? How many cases, what it looks like, and if we need to make another declaration, we do. But otherwise than that, we're kind of blowing in the wind until this thing slows down a little bit in my mind.
The only point of the 90 days is it gives the window for the convention center to say, we're not taking reservations for 90 days.
How about, we're not taking reservations for the, at this point?
Foreseeable future?
Foreseeable future because I, I, as a former meeting planner, I, I couldn't have called the convention center and booked something with it going on right now.
I'm completely fine with that. Councilmember Peterson?
I totally agree, Councilmember Ennis. And I just want to make a comment, Mayor. Blue Flame Cruises Car Show was to be at the convention center on June 20th and it was a no-brainer. We called Mr. Danielson and counsel from the very beginning.
I, I can't see Doc, but I think, Councilmember Jackson, did you want to make a comment?
Right, I agree 100%. We've canceled all bookings and reservations at the car center too because of the spike in the, and we have just, I think it's wise for us to go ahead and go with this. And when it's time for a motion, I, I will entertain a motion to go ahead and accept your recommendation, Mayor.
Okay, well, it's time. Would you like to make a motion? Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Ennis that we approve the ordinance number 2020-18 that closes the convention center for the foreseeable future, that changes phase three to, to be determined and ratifies emergency order number seven. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 12B, public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2020-19 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the development standards for the Bastrop Grove Residential Plan Development District with a residential base uses for 67.111 acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey, abstract 98, located south of Agnes Street and east of State Highway 304 within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibits A and B, including a severability clause establishing an effective date and move to include on the July 28th, 2020, city council consent agenda for a second reading. Ms. Bill?
Good evening. So this case tonight is on the property just south of the New Seaton Hospital, south of the new Agnes Street and east of 304. There's some property around it that'll eventually be commercial. This middle part will be residential. The request is to amend an existing planned development district document that was adopted back in November of last year. The request is to amend the development standards, not to change the lot counts or any of the uses within the planned development district. It's the development standards regarding setbacks, driveways, parking, and those kind of things. The future land use in that area is transitional residential with the character district of the Meadows and the existing PDD that became just straight PDD zoning with the new B3 code. They already have filed a preliminary plat that's gone through the Planning and Zoning Commission, that you can see the layout, that this mirrors the original concept plan that was in the planned development district document. The summary of changes that they're requesting is, one is in addition of an administrative adjustment process. They don't have to come back every time the developer or home builder needs to make a slight tweak to some minor development standards within the code. It wouldn't allow them to increase the lot count or change anything density-wise on the, in the plan. We changed the parking standards to better reflect our new B3 code that does not have any parking standards in it. There were some excessive parking requirements in the previous version. Minimum dwelling sizes, our new code defaults to the International Building Code. They're requesting to, they, they kind of had a range and they wanted to widen that range down to, to allow some smaller housing size options. Setback encroachment for the alley-loaded corner lots, they wanted to be able to extend some bay windows into the street side, so it would be a corner lot, they wouldn't be up against another property in those situations. One of the things that was included in the document was a facade and architectural differentiation and that was, that was copied straight from our old code, which was one of the reasons why we wanted to amend the code. Didn't make a lot of sense. So they've amended that language to better reflect the existing B3 code and the pattern book and the language of trying to make sure that they're, you're providing architectural differentiation with front porches and awnings and those kind of features, but not a weird formula for different housing, housing fronts. They've removed the sample lot elevations because they didn't really serve a, a very good purpose. And then there was some, some language about parking along streets that they removed.
So it's now allowed or it's not allowed?
So, so it's still allowed. What it was is they, we, there'd been some previous language and they're trying to group the parking spaces, like trying to pair driveways, so you ended up with enough spots for four cars in between driveways. It didn't make a lot of, it's sense. It was, it was trying to serve a purpose, but what we've gotten to is, one of the things that they'd included in the, the draft that went to Planning and Zoning Commission was the base language of the fire code that says you have to have, you can't have any parking on a street if it's between 20 and 26 feet or, and you can only have parking on one side if the pavement width is 26 to 32 feet. What the Development Review Committee recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission was to adopt the actual B3 code cross-section as their street standard, since that had already been vetted through the entire process of council, so that, to use those standards that are appropriate from the B3 code. So we're not having to reinvent and redesign the street with each section. We did mail notification to 14 adjacent property owners in accordance to state law and then with our new code, we do require signage to be put on, placed on site, so there should be hopefully still two signs out there notifying people that drive by. Since the DRC action, the applicant before P and Z did agree to the, the requested conditions. Part of the, the condition was to adopt the B3 code. One of the main differences is in our old standards, the right-of-way width was only 50 feet, our new code is 55 feet. So we will work with the applicant to make sure that the sidewalk widths, the planting areas and all, and the street lighting fits within that right-of-way, so there might be some slight tweaks to the, the cross-section that's in the B3 code. And you can see the new language in the draft on pages five and 11 and 12. So those were, the, the two conditions of the Development Review Committee, one was that there was some language that got tweaked about alley-loaded parking, which was fixed in the applicant update. It just was confusing on where they were putting their alley parking. At the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 25th, they recommended, by a vote of six to one, to recommend approval of the document with the conditions from the DRC. And that is the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bill. Council, any questions for staff? Councilmember Ennis, your mic's off.
Sounds like it was on. Why are they changing the dwelling sizes?
I think they just want it, they have a, a home builder that's looking at the property and they wanted to be able to have some wider variation in their products. So in our previous code, we had had our minimum dwelling size in town was 1,000 square feet. You couldn't have anything smaller than a 1,000 square foot house in town. They'd artificially made their own ranges even higher than that. I think their minimum that we stroked there was 1,200 square feet. So now they've decreased that to, I believe it's 800 square feet, which our new, the new B3 codes don't have a minimum dwelling size at all. It just defaults to the International Building Code for what's allowed as a residential dwelling, which I believe is 400 square feet is the minimum dwelling size to be considered a single-family dwelling.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, any questions for staff?
I move to approve.
Well, we can't quite yet. We got to have a public hearing.
Oh, sorry. My question is legally, what's the definition of a slight tweak?
So it's, it's defined in the, there's three criteria and I'll have to pull that up out of the staff report. So it was, it cannot increase the overall density or traffic impacts of the development. It doesn't allow, you can allow, staff can allow a deviation of up to 5% of a numerical standard, which that's also something we adopted in the B3 code, and has no significant adverse impact on the neighboring properties, public or persons who will occupy or, or use the proposed development. So they can't make any substantive changes. It has to be fairly small.
Thank you. Excellent. You answered my question because I didn't want there to be a confusion with the public that we were, whatever staff said was slight, was slight. We actually have a definition and I just wanted to assure the public of that. So I am formally opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak for the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing. Councilmember Rogers?
I now move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers. And a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Sorry, discussion?
I have a kind of a, kind of a question, kind of overarching question. This is a fairly large project and, and DRC appears to be asking them to comply with the B3 codes to make it consistent with what we've been trying to achieve over the past couple of years. what we've been trying to achieve over the past couple of years. It appears to be, based on my reading, a fairly positive process that y'all had with this builder. Kudos to y'all and to the developer then.
And I think it's a testament that they see that the B3 code, that there's definite advantages to what, the standards that are in there.
Well, and the other thing that I think is wonderful is that we hear all the time about affordable housing and wanting to have housing variety, and we all know that one of the ways that you get the price lower is it's a smaller house on a smaller lot, and then people can be a homeowner that previously would be priced out.
And I think that's a great point. They do have a home builder, a national builder that's interested, and that's exactly what drove the changes in the market. So, I think we're headed in the right direction.
So, when I look at it, it tells me that there's, maybe there's a single mom nurse that can now afford to buy a house and walk to work at the new hospital, which is something that prior to, 2, 3 years ago, wouldn't have even been a possibility. So, congratulations to staff and the developer and everyone. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 12C, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R2020-59 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Allowing the Use of an Internal Illumination on a Pylon Sign for Lakeside Phase 1 and 2, Lot 1, Also Known as St. David's Hospital. Located at 3201 East State Highway 71, is shown in Exhibit A, Establishing a Repealing Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Ms. Bills?
So, this request is for St. David's Hospital, an emergency center at, along Highway 71. It's been there for a number of years, and they have an existing, and I incorrectly in the report said it wasn't internally illuminated. They have an existing internally illuminated 35-foot-tall pylon sign. I think some of the light bulbs were burnt out, which gave me the impression it wasn't currently lit. So, they do have an existing sign. They would like to both move it and then replace it with a taller sign, because there's a tree on site. With, in the new code, it does give staff some leeway to approve some height variances. So, they've requested up to 4 feet of increased height, which staff can approve, and with their site standards that they've provided us, staff has reviewed that and has been able to approve that administratively. But what they're asking for to counsel is to have an internally illuminated sign. With the new B3 codes, none of our signage is allowed to be internally illuminated, save for channel letters that get approved by warrant by the DRC. So, a monument sign, a pylon sign, and wall signs cannot be internally illuminated. So, this is kind of one of those examples of doing different. The applicant, with their sign applications, request to counsel review and consider allowing them to do internal lighting on the sign.
So, for clarity, Ms. Bills, it's not so much that staff thinks that the sign isn't a good idea, it's that staff cannot administratively approve it, and it's having to come to counsel.
Yes.
That's why we're here talking about it today.
There's no standard in the code for internal lighting for a pylon sign that staff can approve.
Counsel, Michael Whelan has reached out to me, and it's my understanding that he's sent each of the council members. I'm seeing nods, yes. He has a statement.
And he's on the line, too.
And he's on the line. So, we can hear from him. Do you have any other questions for Ms. Bills?
One of the things they did work on with staff is providing that the background for the sign would be a darker color. One of the things in our old code that did, when we did allow internal lighting, was that the background couldn't be white, because a white background tends to have a more of a glaring, when you go stare at it, look at it, and look off, it reflects a little worse in your eyes. So, the darker background would, wouldn't provide that. It would be a darker background, which would comply with our dark sky ordinances.
Counsel, do you have any concerns or comments? Councilmember Rogers?
I just have a question, because there is neighborhood behind there. We don't foresee this illuminating be any more than the old sign was when all the light bulbs worked.
No.
Okay.
And it would still have to comply with our light standards, that they would, it wouldn't be able to spill over onto the adjacent property.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we weren't, I know that the old light bulbs didn't work, but we weren't expecting more light, because that is a neighborhood behind there. So, I just want to make sure we ask that question. Thank you.
That is a great question. Counsel, other questions? For me personally, if it's the middle of the night and I'm looking for a hospital, I'd like to be able to see the sign.
I want to see where the emergency room is.
Yeah. Councilmember Ennis?
I concur with that completely, and I would love it if every presentation we got from folks outside of City Hall was as well-laid out as this one is, as far as explanation.
Just the pictures, I mean, it just, it covers all the bases and answered all the questions and really did a good job. I'm sure Mr. Whelan would like to speak unless somebody would like to make a motion.
I move to approve unless he would like to say.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Whelan, thank you very much for calling in. Congratulations, and thank you for serving the community.
Thank you very much, and please convey my thanks to the staff, which guided us, since I'm new to Bastrop, and they were extremely respectful, and I'm ready to move there.
Yay! Well, come on. We're building houses every day. All right, Counsel, we're moving on to item 12D, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R2020-60 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Releasing the Budget Restrictions Discussed at City Council Update on April 14, 2020, Repealing All Resolutions in Conflict and Providing an Effective Date. Is this Ms. Waldron or Mr. Jobe? Who's taking this one?
I'll take it.
All righty.
Why not? Okay, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. As you recall, we were pretty unsure how COVID was going to impact the budget. So, we really went back. Tracy and I scrubbed the numbers. We proposed a few things to you, which you've seen in your staff report, and that was to freeze 12 positions. And I want to be clear that these were already budgeted positions. These are not new positions. These are positions that were planned to be hired. We just said, let's wait a little while and make sure that we're receiving enough sales tax to get this done before we move forward. So, we also talked about freezing some interdepartmental loans, the VERF, paying things off like that. Well, sales tax has done extremely well, much better than we expected. I think we've actually had an increase since the staff report was written, and the numbers are a little bit higher. But basically, the deficit of the 761,000 that we expected it to be is a little closer to about 156,000, and that has already been covered by the salary savings this year. So, we currently have, we're going to have, we will not have a shortfall in revenue this year. And I don't know if I'm saying that in a correct accountant manner, but I'm sure Tracy can correct me. But basically, the money we didn't think we were going to make, we did, and we've realized that savings already this year to cover what we have. We actually may generate a surplus. So, I wanted to bring this back to you. Everybody was interested in this being an action, Adam. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Councilmember Ennis? You're off.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this with one stipulation, that we do not post the planning director until our new city manager is on board.
I would, can I respectfully give you some feedback? I have a.
Of course. We always need the feedback. It's always interesting when it comes up.
I failed to mention that, if you'd like.
It's always interesting when it comes up at the last minute.
Yeah, I actually failed to mention that. I've spoken with Mr. Hoffman. We've reviewed the job description. What I do think we'll probably do is tweak the actual shiny, the advertisement. By the time we get it posted and back on order, I think he'll be here anyway. I just, we just don't want to slow anything down. We want to keep progressing and moving forward. And he is on board, and we've spoken about this. So, he is aware of your, if that's your concern, he is aware of it. We've spoken in the past.
Then I remove that part from my motion and move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Peterson. I can confirm that I, too, had a real quick conversation with Mr. Hoffman, and he's interested in having resumes to start looking over, and this just, we all agree, it's a critical position. So, he absolutely will be involved.
From now on, that needs to be in your presentation upfront, rather than kind of tagged on at the very end.
I think it's because the conversation was after the packet was posted.
And I'm going to blame that one on Tracy. She wrote the staff report.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem Nelson.
May I say August 3?
August 3, August 3. All right, I have a motion, a second, a chant. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're moving on to 12E, Consider Action to Approve the First Reading of Ordinance Number 2020-20 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Amending the Budget for the Fiscal Year 2020 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, Appropriating the Various Amounts Herein as attached in Exhibit A, Repealing All Prior Ordinances and Actions in Conflict Here With, and Establishing an Effective Date, and Move to Include on the July 28, 2020, City Council Consent Agenda for a Second Reading. I'm thinking this is Ms. Waldron. There she is.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This is Tracy from my home office. Most of these amendments are not going to surprise you. We've been kind of waiting to see how the numbers were going to fall out, so I have detail in the exhibit. But Amendment 1 is for the general fund. I do have a correction, which I've fixed on the second reading document. This was the right page number, but the reference, it's actually the city manager's budget. It is an increase. I know we've talked about, there was two positions in this department originally that were never filled this year, the council liaison and the office assistant. We used that savings to offset the city manager settlement, and this 86,000 is what we need to go ahead and cover the interim, the new city manager starting in August, and also the city manager search fee. So, this is all encompassing in one budget amendment. The second amendment is also the general fund, and this is a survey that Trey has brought to my attention that is needed for the Main Street project. So, that's what the 17-5 is for. The rest of it is the culmination of all of the salary savings that we've calculated up to this point, just moving it into contingency fund in case it is needed in the future. Amendment 3 is recognizing the CARES, the Coronavirus CARES Act funds, so it's bringing it into revenue, and it's also increasing our emergency management line item for that. And Amendment 4 is recognizing some EDC funding for projects that they had approved in their budget. Now the projects have been completed, and we're recognizing their revenue and also the expenses. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Councilmember Rogers?
I just wanted to thank you that this was just laid out so simple. I could totally understand it. I could see where you were coming and going, and I want to appreciate your time on, I know it's super simple for you, but to make it really simple so I could understand it. I really appreciate the clarity and easy to follow.
Got it.
And the all-fund summary at the end just really pulls it all together.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously for amending the budget. Thank you, Ms. Waldron, for coming to us from your home office and for providing good information. Kudos to you and your staff. All right, we're on item 12F, Hold a Public Hearing to Review the Program Performance of the Activities Completed Under the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Grant from the Texas Department of Agriculture for a Sewer Improvements Project, which will include an explanation of the actual use of the Texas CDBG funds, and invite comments. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So, if you'll remember, if you'll recall, at the last meeting, we actually approved the sewer improvements related to the drainage project there at Pine Street, and this is the public hearing to see if there's any comments on that. And, Mr. Secretary, I don't know that we've received any or not, but we have to have a public hearing.
Well, so I'm officially opening the public hearing. Are there any, is anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing.
That was our requirement.
And we have now met the requirements for the grant. Excellent. Moving on to item 12G, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R2020-61 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Confirming a Board Appointment of the Mayor is Required in Section 3.08 of the City's Charter and Establishing an Effective Date. Counsel, you, and I had a document on this one, Colin. You had access to Mr. Washington's application, Charles Washington Jr. I met in January of 2019, and he came to my office on June 6 of 2019, and I've had his name and phone number sitting on my desk, waiting for the right opportunity. Ms. Crawford, after the death of her husband, she has decided to relocate and be close to family, which is where a lot of folks, is a really good place for her, although we miss her, and that has left us an opening on the Bastrop Economic Development Board in Place 6, and I am asking you to confirm, Charles Washington Jr., if you were to do so, it would make our statistics for board appointments for this fiscal year to be 39% new to serving on boards, 42% downtown, 42% other than downtown, 16% in the ETJ, 47% female, and 53% male.
I so move.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Let's give Mr. Washington a round of applause and welcome him to the board. He'll be in a board budget meeting in just a couple of weeks, so we're glad to have him on the board. Counsel, we're on our last and final page. Item number 12H, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R2020-62 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Reducing Mowing and Other Related Leans Filed by the City of Bastrop Against 1811 Main Street to $10,000, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents, Providing a Severability Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Counsel, I received an email from the owner of 1811 Main Street indicating that the original lien was $10,000, that it had grown to $19,000, and he was hoping that we might consider reducing that to $10,000. And today, at 10:29 a.m., I received an email that said that they were prepared to have a $10,000 check to us by the end of the week. After this was posted, I know that Councilmember Rogers asked some questions, and City Manager Jobe sent an email with some additional information, so I will turn it over to him to fill in some blanks for us. Mr. Jobe?
Sure. I think you did a great job. The actual amount on the lien, as I said in the email earlier, was 10,000.
You want me to pull the email?
600, yeah, 682. Let me pull that up again.
How many times was it mowed?
That particular $10,000 fee or $10,000-plus fee was for one cleanup. That was equipment, labor. I actually have a breakdown. It was removing trees. It was quite a bit of work.
It's a big piece of property. It was $10,982.14, which included a $20 filing fee for the lien.
That's correct. And this has been a property that, you asked about the time they were notified. They were notified 12 times. The amount, while it's over $10,000, this gets the lien settled. It gets things taken care of. And with that, I'll take any questions.
So, Councilmember Rogers, go ahead.
No, you go. They called on you.
Okay, so when exactly was this work done?
Work was done in June of 2012.
2012. And when you say he was notified, was that notified by phone? Was that, did he get a certified mail that we know that he knows?
He would have received a certified mail from the post office or from the police department through the post office.
So, it's been 8 years, and they haven't had much, like, they haven't been making payments or anything?
Correct. And there's a 10% annual increase every year on the base amount, which is why it's as high as it is now.
And have we had to do any maintenance to that land since then?
I actually received an email from Chief Stifnik today. I actually received an email from Chief Stifnik today and Mr. Walters did have to do a code enforcement action or notify them to have it cleaned up in 2014, but that's the last record that I've seen.
And did they take care of it then?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
So does this $10,000 recover all the city expenditures, the public dollars that have been spent on this project?
It's a, it's, it's, it's not quite. It's about $900.
$900 short.
Yeah. But I do think it gets us a long way to getting this property redeveloped and on the right path.
I'm in, I'm in agreement. I think we need to put this behind us. I move to approve.
This is a rare occasion.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Rogers?
Madam Mayor, I, I understand and I, and I agree with Councilor, or Mayor Pro Tem Nelson, that I'd love to get it off the records. I just don't want to start, I don't know how many properties we have in this kind of situation and how many more liens we've bought. I just don't want to see every council meeting forgiving $10,000. I mean, I, we haven't seen him come to us in eight years to ask. So there must be some interest now, all of a sudden, he wants to do something with his property. Now you want the liens taken care of when it's been eight years he's had that lien. So, I mean, I agree that I'd love to see it cleared up off books, but I would have loved to see somebody come and talk to us within that eight years.
Oh, that, yes, that would have been ideal. I agree.
And so, I mean, I don't want to start a, like the, everything else, we don't want to start a precedent that, you know. So if you don't mind, I wouldn't, I would like to see maybe in our budget, see how many liens are still out there. I mean, I'd like to know what people owe us and what to expect, how many more people to walk through the door and expect that forgiveness? Because you forgive one, you're going to have to forgive everybody.
Sure, and if you're interested in some, some policy on, on percentages that you're willing to, to forgive, I think we can certainly bring that back.
Can maybe even think of, like they do those, come in and pay your warrants at one time where you don't get any fees? Maybe we can start a program that if they come in and pay their fees, they'll, we'll waive all the late charges. I just, you know me, I want to be fair to everybody.
That's right. We did some, sorry.
So I would just like to know kind of how much
Sure.
Are our citizens in debt?
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson, did you want to make a comment?
I think, I think that each incident carries its own issues in there. I think the fact that we have a, a property owner that's willing to work with us in this case, although he's eight years a little bit late, I think is still indicative of, of good effort should be made toward, toward accommodating him as well as the city. So I, I don't disagree. I just think that each incident carries its own weight.
So I have a motion and a second. Any, I'm sorry, Alan, did you want to give us some advice? You sure?
I was just going to say, Mayor and counsel, that, that these sorts of obligations to the city are historically very difficult to collect on.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rogers was referring to what some cities call an amnesty period, where if you come in and settle today, we'll accept a portion of it, not the entire thing. And that actually is a very good idea and something that I would encourage us to try to pursue if staff comes back with a sizable number of these on our books.
But I believe we can collect it if you get ready to sell that land.
That's correct.
You can't.
They can't sell with a lien.
Right. So we might not collect it, but when you just get ready to take your money, we're going to take our money.
Correct.
I still have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
I didn't hear what the motion was. Could you repeat the motion for me, please?
The motion was for approval, so that would be to accept $10,000 for resolution 2020-62 as it stated on the agenda. Council, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, and I'm hoping that included, we have it this week.
It certainly can. If that's the motion you want to, you want, do you, would you like to amend your second for the motion that they be paid this week?
If that's what their offer was, I just want to make sure that if we're accepting their offer, that we accept it, that they said they'd have it this week, right?
That's acceptable to me.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is amended, that the $10,000 needs to be paid this week. And I would suggest, counsel, that it if is not paid this week, that it be placed on the July 28th agenda and we, maybe we revisit the amount. Is that a friendly amendment and accepted by the motion and second?
Yes.
All right. Do we need to, since we amended the motion, do we need to retake the vote? Alan?
That's what I would do. I would call, I would rescind the previous one and replace it with a new vote.
Okay, we're replacing the vote. I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Peterson that the $10,000 is agreeable for the lien to be released if it is paid this week, which Friday is the 18th? 17.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't even know what month it is. By this Friday, July 17.
We will reach out.
Yes. And that if that is not paid, then we will see it on next council's agenda and we will set an amount at that point. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel, appreciate that. Moving to our last item on the individual consideration, 12I. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2020-63 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a list of qualified consulting firms to provide engineering services for CDBG MIT, that's mitigation funding through the GLO. That's the General Land Office. Authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. If you recall, we, maybe two meetings ago, we actually hired a grant consultant for this very same thing. As part of that process, we needed to bring some engineers on board. We had eight people apply. We've reviewed, staff has reviewed their qualifications, they're all very well qualified. We have quite a few projects. I think it'd be nice to have several approved engineers so that we can spread these things out. What we don't want to do is, you know, stack them to one engineer and take long. We really want to meet that period. So with that, you've seen in your staff report, excuse me, I lost my page for a minute there. In your staff report, I'm making a recommendation that we approve these engineers and then we will execute an individual contract. This is very similar to what we did in 2018.
It's essentially a vendor list.
That's right. We'll get a general service agreement together and then we'll come in with task orders and bring those back for approval to you at each time. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Are we going to establish standardized contracts with these people rather than going through a myriad of contract types?
We have some standardized contract documents for the general service agreement. This will be a standardized, because it has been, I'm sure it's going to have some federal requirements, that will be the standard GLO and hazardous mitigation requirements. So it's a little different. We have put together a standard contract for, with a certain percentage is for retention and things of that nature. But the, we will not specifically use that because this will be federally funded in GLO. They have their own required contract. But it should be standardized, yes.
Just trying to ensure some, some consistency in how we deal with each and every one of our individual contracts. I love the concept, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, there's crazy money out there, but in order to get it, you've got to get the preliminaries done and, and you got to get all your ducks in a row.
Yeah, we're going to schedule a meeting pretty much when this is over and start handing out projects, bringing back contracts, and they're going to start getting some estimates so we can apply in October.
Excellent.
With that, I move to approve.
Motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you, counsel. That concludes our agenda. We started at 5 o'clock with executive session and we have one item on executive session that we still need to complete. So it is 8:22 and we will be going into executive session to review item 2B as shown on page two of the agenda. We will specifically be talking about 702, 704 Main Street. And because of that, Councilmember Ennis will be recusing himself. Mr. Attorney?
Mayor, counsel, regarding our two executive session items, 2, 2B had two parts, 1113